Good evening. This is a regular session of the Boot and Township Board of Education held for the purpose of transacting appropriate board business. In compliance with Chapter 231, laws of 1975, the notice of this meeting was advertised in the Morris County Daily Record. Copies of the agenda of this meeting were properly posted and may available to the public.
Mrs. Bardock? Mr. Brandner? Here. Mrs. Cavanna?
Here.
Mr. Chen?
Here.
Mrs. Hermy?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. LeVar?
Here.
Mrs. McBride? Mrs. Nowicka?
Here.
Also present, Dr. Angelo Lo, Superintendent Principal. I do not see our student representative. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand for the pleasure of attendance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, welcome. The first item on our agenda is the Board of Education training by Charlie Peterson, our New Jersey School Boards Association Field Service Representative. And tonight, we're going to be discussing a board self-evaluation. And welcome.
Yes, we are. Thank you. It is my pleasure to be here. You know, the board has continued to make a commitment to our training. So this is one of those opportunities. You know, we say that if we hold the rest of the district accountable, we should hold ourselves accountable. And so one of the ways that we do that is through the board self-evaluation. It used to be required by the state, and then maybe about, I don't know, five or six years ago, when they relaxed some of the QZAC requirements, this was one that they took away. So we say the boards that continue to do it, do it because it's a good governance practice. So this is something then that your board identified as something that it would like to do as you close out your board year. You know, because it's not required, you know, a lot of times I get asked, well, like, is there a certain time we have to do this? Or does it matter when we do it? And it's really what is, what works for your board. So some boards do it at the same time that they're doing the superintendent's evaluation, and some boards do it now at the end of their board year. So it's kind of whatever makes the most sense for your board. So just, you know, I know that it was a lot to digest and go over, so that's why I kind of put this summary together, just because I think that there were some really highlighted, actionable items that we can talk about and, you know, maybe help the board move forward in certain areas, rather than just like kind of look through the whole thing, just kind of maybe focus on what those priorities and things that were consistently seen throughout the board self-evaluation. So the board, you know, you evaluate yourself on nine different areas, and then there's kind of two sections. The top section of each area is about the board, and then the bottom section is about you, the board member. So if you're looking at those overall nine areas, you know, so about the board section, what was the average of them? And the average was a 3.0. And so you can see that the lowest areas that the board evaluated itself was in planning and in student achievement. And in both cases, it was more about the monitoring of those things as opposed to the actual content of them. And then the highest area that the board evaluated itself was in board performance with a 3.4. So just kind of wanted to, you know, go through, you know, it one of the things, I guess, as you look at about you, the member, you'll see that in most cases, you know, the board evaluated yourselves as members individually higher than you evaluated the board. I, you know, ideally, it would be flip-flopped and saying that, you know, the synergy of what we can accomplish together as a board team ideally would be more than what we could accomplish as individuals. So that's just something kind of to think about, you know. And we also say, from New Jersey School Boards' perspective, that any area that's less than a 3.0 is an area that you want to give increased focus or attention to. So those, when you can see, I think you have three areas like that, right? The planning, the student achievement, and the board operations were all under a 3.0. So, you know, and in the board operations, I think, again, you know, the kind of the resounding theme that came out of there was talking about committees and the information that comes out of the committees and where those members that are on there. So that's what, like, kind of I meant in things that we could be talking about and, you know, hopefully coming up with solutions or actionable items so that when we do this again next year, we don't see these same things on here. So in planning, you know, I think, you know, the board identified the benefit that you, you know, receive from the strategic plan, from bringing the community in to be part of that process, and then also acknowledge, you know, the fact that your board does a really great job of having your, your goals listed on all of your agendas to always keep that in front of you. So like I said, the area that, you know, kind of spoke the loudest, and if I looked in the entire event, went through the entire evaluation and said, what are the two indicators that the board evaluated itself the lowest on? And it was that monitoring of progress of goals and the reviewing of the action plans. And I think, like, there was four and five members gave those in unsatisfactory. So the board is kind of sending a clear message that it needs to do better in that area. So I just kind of wanted to, to talk about that and see what that could or should look like, or what the board's expectations were in terms of what we're not doing, recognizing that, you know, as we think about our board year and think about the board calendar, we should think about it on a 12-month basis. And so we know that if we're setting our goals at this meeting, we should be planning out throughout the 12 months and saying, okay, on this month, we're going to add into our agenda, or reporting out on the goals. And on this month, we're going to add into our, you know. So from the board's perspective, you should be holding yourselves accountable or making sure that this is part of your work. And the way that you do that is by putting it in a calendar and actually laying out that work over the year, and then holding yourselves accountable to making that happen. You know, there are many different ways too to get updates on goals. So sometimes we think, well, you know, it's not a formal reporting out program, process that we're all sitting here talking about at a meeting. Sometimes we think that's the only way that happens. But it could be that, you know, you're getting a student presentation, or you're giving a staff presentation, or you're getting, you know, information in, from the superintendent. And all of those things perhaps are ways that you're being reported out to about the goals, but sometimes we're just not making the connections, you know. I can remember working with one board and the board, I was like, you know, like, can that hit me over the head and say, like, hey, the reason that you're getting this information is because it relates to goal number two, you know. So, so sometimes we just have to make sure as a board that we're understanding what that connection is, and then being able to fit all those pieces together so that we do have an understanding of what that progress is. So just kind of want to leave it now, open it up to you as a group and see what you think and...
Yeah, so it's interesting that we sort of came to a consensus on that. I've seen a lot of positive developments through the year. There's been discussion about board governance committee, which will address a lot of board governance. We've also talked about this idea of tying agenda items to goals and tying it by maybe even writing it on the agenda where it applies. So, so this presentation relates to this goal, right? Or this item relates to this goal as it relates to... Because then it, it would clearly tie it together in terms of why we're doing it when, throughout the course of the year. We do operate on a cadence. Certain things always happen at the same time each calendar year, so it makes sense to... And all of those things are tied to the overall mission and goals of the district. So I think writing it down would be helpful. I'm looking forward to seeing how the board governance develops, right? Things like that, just to make things hopefully smoother and get everyone on the same page.
Yeah, I think, I think, I thought you were fair. I was pretty self-critical myself and us on the monitoring of the goals. We set the goals, a lot of times we achieve the goals, sometimes vary results, but I don't think we do a good job, like you mentioned, Charlie, of monitoring for a year. I like the idea of a calendar. And hey, at this date, we should just have a check-in. How are we doing, you know, publicly and discuss it? We don't do a good job of that. I think you have...
And perhaps we can put it on, like, you know, there are many things that are, repeat themselves every year on our calendar, you know, they're just automatically there. So perhaps, like, certain times a year, we can pick the meetings that make sense for the board. But the board can report out on its own goals, you know, multiple times a year. You know, we can, you know, we set the goals. If we set them in September, maybe at this meeting, you know, December, we report on our progress. March, we report on, and then again, you know, final, you know, if they end up doing this all year, you know, we could, perhaps that's an idea. And I think we self-recognized over the last year some of our deficiencies, and then we did, I think we had suggested it, that we, you know, look into a governance committee, which is in one of your presentations and our, one of our board trainings. And so we, we created one for this remainder of the year, and, you know, I guess we'll likely continue it into next year and see. You know, I think that'll, it was a positive first meeting that we had. And I think there are many board-level things that sometimes don't fit into a committee, and you're kind of looking, where, you know, where can that go? And so that also made sense, you know, the governance committee can take those board-level things and, and, you know, try to, you know, handle them, you know, in a, in a better way. So, so, I guess that makes sense.
No, I, I agree. I was just thinking, maybe, I'm like, okay, like, every three months, maybe that's... I don't know how, we haven't set a schedule yet for the governance committee meeting, so that's something I would like to just have out there, you know. And then maybe it's every three months, or...
That could probably mean more, a little more.
A little, need more, but maybe every three months we work that, you know, not leaving it. Somehow, obviously, because that's quite a time in council meetings, so.
Good. Because, you know, one of the areas that the board also identified, you know, what the action plans are saying with the board goals, that you, you know, could be having action plans for those as well. So again, that would be a perfect opportunity for that to be something for the governance committee to either work on or at least tie together. Because sometimes, you know, if a board goal is specific to, say, to a certain committee, like if you have a budget goal, you might have the finance committee be working on that, but the, the governance committee is the one that's kind of saying, like, how we doing? Is things moving along? You know, and just kind of the one that provides that oversight to make sure that the board is making progress on its own goals.
Yeah, I was just thinking, say, maybe we can do a better job of tying the goal committees, discuss as a board how, what our action plan is in the committee, and then that, we can make that public and discuss it, and then we can follow up on it, see how we're doing in the actual... We don't do, I think, a good job of that. Do you have anything about that?
Any other thoughts about action plans or progress and goals that we mentioned? Okay, good. Then the next section, we talked, talked about policy, and that was really an area where the board evaluated itself the highest, like, the highest indicator in the whole board self-evaluation was the 3.9. And then that's what the board gave itself for reviewing and updating your policy manual and doing, you know, making sure that you stay on top of your policy work. You know, the board indicated that it understands its roles and that you use policy when you have issues that, you know, and use policy to reference it. But then, you know, somebody had asked the question, well, is there more that we should be doing? Like, okay, we're good at updating these things, but that's pretty much all we need to do. Is there anything more? So I just was kind of wondering what maybe those expectations or thoughts were about policy and, like, like, I don't know, do you review, like, whole sections? Like, some boards will kind of like, how your curriculum's on a five-year cycle. Sometimes boards will, like, put their policy manual on a five-year cycle and say, like, once every five years, we're going to look through the finance section of our policy manual, like, and kind of keep, you know, making sure that the policies are still in alignment with what you, what you're doing, and just kind of holding yourself accountable to reviewing them on a periodic basis, so.
That's pretty much what we do.
Okay, good.
Well, I mean, I think we mean heavily on the changes that are happening and followed by New Jersey's, New Jersey's school boards. We kind of follow those changes and do updates. You know, our assistant, administrative assistant, Catherine Vickers, is excellent at helping guide us into, like, the changes that are happening to the statutes and how they apply to our policies. But I was thinking that it would be, it would make sense to just make sure, like, is there a certain amount of time that we feel, like, sometimes you look back and it's like, oh, we haven't updated it. We haven't, haven't needed to update something, but it hasn't been looked at since 2008 per se, so maybe it should be like, have, I don't know, every 10 years or five years, make sure, you know, that there's, something's been reviewed. And I, I think the 9000s, we were talking about reviewing that in governance, that's all of our board policies. You know, it's not necessarily something that changes very much, but the governance committee was like, well, maybe that's one thing we can take on, at least just like that part, you know. So I think that would be a fair action item, but like, what, does anybody have a sense of, like, how many, like, where would we want to set that threshold, you know, where we want to do it?
Can I just jump in real quick, Ms. Hermy? So generally speaking, when we look at policies, and I look at them with my administrative assistant, we look to see two things. How, the, when the last time the board re-adopted a policy was that hasn't changed, right? And we always like to go back and do a 10-year look back. Okay, so we are following, like, a 10-year schedule. And then, anything that's come out that's been updated by New Jersey School Boards. So if that's been updated by New Jersey School Boards, we generally will bring it to the committee and say, there have been some moderate changes, there have been some major changes, or there's, there's just a couple of changes that are in there. We'll bring it to the committee and we'll make those changes and bring them on for a first reading, based on what school board, what school boards actually puts out. There are many policies that are the critical policies that come from New Jersey School Boards, and then there are policies that are just specific to Boot and Township that perhaps other districts might have the same sort of policy, but they're really specific to the district, and you may not even need them ultimately. And that's something else that the, that the committee will do. They'll review those policies and make a determination if it's even still necessary to have a policy of those, you know, of that nature. It's kind of like analog versus digital photography, right? Do you still need it? Do you still want it? Is there a value in it, you know, those sorts of things? So just know that we are having those, those conversations in committee too.
And I would add that we typically, you know, our policies are typically updated to be consistent with New Jersey School Boards. We find that, you know, they've done the legwork in, in coming up with the wording and vetting it through their attorneys, and, you know, and we feel that, you know, by keeping our policies as consistent as possible with New Jersey School Boards, it keeps us out of trouble, you know. We have some minor policies, I think, that, you know, are homegrown. I think we just looked at one a couple of years ago, like, with library book lines or something like that, like, they're, you know, but they're not terribly controversial yet. And so, but we mainly, you know, stick to the New Jersey School Boards, you know, sample policies when we update and review. And that is a good practice.
Is 10 years, that's a good practice? I'm just asking.
It's whatever works for you. I mean, just as long as there's some kind of a regular review, what the interval is, is whatever works for you. And then someone else had, and someone had mentioned about understanding the board's role, you know, talking about the board's role in regulations. So I just want to make it clear that, so the regulations are the work of the administration, and the only time board involvement is needed is if a regulation is mandated. And if the state says you have to have a regulation on this, then it requires board approval. All other regulations are the work of the administration, and it's essentially for them to help support the, you know, the policies that you've developed. So just kind of wanted to clarify and make that distinction. Then in terms of student achievement, so that was the other area that the board, you know, had evaluated itself. And again, with, you know, kind of more looking at how are we doing in terms of monitoring? What, you know, like, how do we know how we're doing? What types of things are we looking at? How are we reporting this out? What is our understanding in this area? I know it was great, you know, you say you set high standards for student achievement, do a good job of measuring against state and, you know, local district benchmarks. So we talked about the fact that you separated out your program and curriculum committee, that it used to also be tied in with a personnel committee, I think, and you separated those out to give them more, you know, more of a role. Talked about student achievement's your top priority, talked about the information that's available to parents on your website. But then just kind of said, you know, from the board's perspective, like, we need to have a better understanding of the data, have a kind of more robust discussions, right, about, about student achievement. So again, just kind of wanted to throw that out to the board to get your sense of your thoughts on this.
We, we know anecdotally that our students do really well. This school churns out really good students, leaders at the high school, kids go to great universities, do all sorts of really good things with their careers and so forth. And at least in our committee discussions, what we've wanted to see is the, the meat and potatoes in terms of how's the stew being made? Because our kids are progressing throughout the year, but other than these point-in-time standardized tests, we don't, I feel like we don't really understand how we got from A to B. Because the kids are getting there. Scores are improving. Scores were already good to begin with. Now that a lot of the distraction from the pandemic is behind us, we're humming in a lot of ways, I felt like it's time to get back to that, you know, the core of what the education, educational outcomes are, academically speaking.
And, and I think that that's a good point, like, when you were saying how the stew is being made. So some of it was making me, you know, want to be sure that we're not getting concerned about the ingredients, but kind of more concerned about what is the, what did the overall end product look like? And is the end product what was meeting our expectations? Like, if we set some, some, set some goals or identified some expectations that our students need to be performing at this level, and are they doing it, and what evidence can you give? I don't need to know how Johnny's doing in reading, and this person's, like, not all the ingredients. That's too granular of a level for the board. So we just made, need to make sure from the board's perspective that our students are achieving in a way that, you know, meets what the, the expectations were that were identified in the goals. And, you know, we're responsible for making sure all of our students are getting at their own addition education and that they're learning the standards and...
I mean, we, we have fabulous teachers. We have a really, what's become a very robust curriculum map. So a lot of the pieces are there, but as a non-professional educator, I still feel like there are gaps in my understanding of, okay, so, you know, where do we go from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, to the standardized tests? What's done with that information? And how do, how does the district evolve continuously at all?
I think it goes back to the monitoring discussion we had in planning, right, where we, it'd be nice if we were able to look at the students throughout the year, right, and see how that is progressing. That's how the stew is made, right? See how we get to the standardized test. There's no, I, I like your A to B, right? It would be great if we had some way to review that, so to self-review and take a look at it, how are we doing? We, we see it point in time every year. We do a good job of that, but in between, we don't really look at it as closely as we should. I don't know if everybody's close to saying.
I agree. I just don't know how do you do that without overstepping or, you know. So I'm curious of, like, what board best practices are in that, in, in the monitoring? You know, is it just identifying the few, the strengths and weaknesses at the beginning of the year and just reporting on, like, what programs are put in place to help those? And then, so I guess those are discussions that we would like to see happen in curriculum and reported at, in the committee, right?
It can be some of, you know, like, you know, if the whole board feels that way, so the, the committee would have discussions more about what's going on, but if you wanted just a really big picture of making sure that we all have an understanding of, you know, what, what are the, the achievement measurements? How, you know, what are we looking at? You know, again, you could insert that into the calendar of certain times to, you know, and even have presentations to help you understand initiatives and updates and things. So, so that you're not, you know, you're not being hard of it, you're just getting an understanding of it. And so until the board reaches a level that it has a comfortable understanding of what's taking place in the district with regard to student achievement, but not getting into the weeds of, you know, what took place to get there, but making sure you have a comfortable understanding of what is happening.
Can I ask how we would do that outside of asking the administration and staff to do more assessments?
Well, that, that really is, eh, there are ways that we can do that, but really the, the key is benchmark assessments. You look at benchmarks, so you see where you are at a point in time in particular. Remember, when you guys received a report in October for NJSLA testing, you're looking at one measure, one point in time, right? So as we've been discussing professionally with the staff, the idea of benchmark assessments, benchmark assessments, whether it be quarterly or in trimesters, when you break it down, that gives you some of that related that you're, that you're thinking about that would help you to have an understanding of where you are at a different point in time. And that sometimes does serve as predictors for how kids might ultimately perform on the NJSLA.
Yes, practically, that's the only way. Like, you have to have a standardized core assessment for grade five reading. We need some hard data, right?
Yeah, but, so, yeah, but I think it's, the, the question is then the, to the administration is that, that's work, right? Which, so there's a trade-off of having them have to do that, which I'm not opposed to. This is from about what would have to happen, right, is some kind of core assessment that everybody needs to be measured at.
Mm-hmm. The same test?
And then the same test for the same grade, and they would have to, so someone would have to develop that, and then we'd have to administer it, and there'd be a trade-off to other time in the classroom potentially, right? So there's just practically, like, I'm not opposed to it, but, and I don't know if the committee goes to it, if we wanted to pursue that of how we're doing with it. That is the only practical way of getting some tangible data at a different point, but having a standardized assessment outside of NJSLA at certain points.
And I don't know if you need to do that multiple times. If you did it maybe once, just between, you know, the start of the year and that way, before the end of the year, just take a look. It could be an option. We could talk about it.
And, and remember, guys, those are, those are elements and aspects of our strategic plan that as we look in year one, and year one is, is essentially you're assessing what you're doing, you're reflecting on it, and you're starting to create that roadmap. These are the conversations that we're having as, as a result of what's included in our strategic plan. So we are, you know, we are looking at those things.
And the, the administration would actually figure out how to do that benchmarking. It's really not up to the board, but based on the data that we have available to us, potentially even with, with the link-it, we, the teachers are able to drill right down onto the areas of D. And a lot of what they, a lot of what they want to know about focusing on is already there, and they're already aware of. So it might not be a huge ask to have a test on either just a particular subject or two, or whatever it is. The educators will figure that out, but we have a lot of the information already.
And maybe the program curriculum committee could work with the administration to ident, you know, just, just to see what benchmarks are already existing, already happening, you know, what, is there any other high-level data that might be useful to us to understand what's going on during the year? In between the NJSLA assessments, maybe, but maybe we can work to identify something that already exists. It's not, doesn't have to be recreated or, you know, tested and all that. There might be stuff already there that we can...
And, and just remember, guys, also, it's not as though teachers are not doing this already themselves, okay? But it helps inform their courses programmatically. There's nothing that's uniform or standardized, okay? And that's something that we're exploring right now. Now you couple that with the fact that next year, you have brand-new standards in language arts and mathematics that are coming out for everyone across the state. So you have to, you have to take that into account as well, and that's a huge undertaking, thanks to the state.
And that's administered as part of the NJSLA, the center, or...
Sure, sure. Because remember, you're being tested on, kids are being tested on the standards, on their proficiency with the standards.
So my only reservation to that, to put that, not in the sense of core assessments, my wife's a teacher, but I'm not going to say where, but they do that in certain districts that she's been at, and what I've heard is that sometimes it doesn't allow that for differentiation versus, because now teachers feel they're boxed to a certain, trying to, trying to get every student just to this, and then it, it disallows enough differentiation for some of the students who may actually need an accelerated program, right? So there's, there's trade-offs, and that's my only hesitation on, like, forcing, and it's like, I want data, I do. I just don't know necessarily the core assessment is the exact tactic. I don't, I don't know. That's my only immediate hesitation around that.
And those are things that we would discuss, you know, that we would bet ourselves administratively with the staff, discuss with the board and committee. that we would bet ourselves administratively with the staff, discuss with the board and committee.
So then the next section was finance. So, you know, some of the things the board talked about in terms of it doing well is that, you know, the committee thoroughly reviews the, the financials, that the, kind of, the board has a prudent and sustainable financial management kind of lens that it looks at through the district. You have a good timely budget process. And that the district itself does a really good job of balancing, you know, all the many things. The academic needs, the operational needs, and, you know, trying to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for our students at a price our community can afford. So some of the things that the board mentioned that, you know, need some more attention or from the board's work is, like, you know, similar to all committees, mention the reporting out that comes from the finance committee. But that same message came out just in committees in general of some kind of a standard or a, a more informational reporting out from the committees. But then also recognizing that the committees only meet a certain amount of time and the financial reports come out every month. Is there, is there some other explanatory information that the board feels it needs to help support your understanding of those reports? So I just kind of wanted to, again, get a sense of what the group was looking for.
I, I, what I can say is like, if, like, the tertiary report for a board of education is, you know, even for accountants, it's a different type of accounting. So I think it's something, you know, as, as new members come on and see this thing, maybe it's something we can bring you in for some board training next, you know, spring. Winter, spring. Because I think you offer training on, on that, you know. So, you know, as we turn over board members, that, that might be a way to address some of that, you know, information, of understand, just understanding a, a school, school board's finances, you know. So that's a, can be an undertaking even for someone who's in the academic profession.
Just to piggyback on that, Morris County School Boards did have a presentation last year. I can't remember if it was in the fall or in the spring. And that slide deck is in our committee board.
And I think one of the governance trainings has a segment on that too, I think. I don't remember which, is what's in there. But, yeah, but the, that more in, yeah, but perhaps, you know, in addition to the gov, governance that you may take in years one, two, or three that cover some of the topics, you know, we can focus on that. Just so we, you know, to give board members the understanding of, you know, what they're looking at.
I think anything we had in here, I'm speaking even more for myself. Things relatively minor. We do a really good job of managing the budget. Paul John Oder did an excellent job of working with us managing it and, you know, making sure he's accounted for. So there are some things we probably can look at a little bit better. But this is one of the areas I feel like we do a pretty good job with. Board, it's pretty solid.
I would say probably some of the larger, like, larger things, you know, don't necessarily go through. Some of the committees, like for finance during budget time, you know, it shivers the whole board routinely during budget time from January to March. It's on, you know, shares, things that way. So even if you look at it, and our finance committee is coming to the full board, you know, doesn't really require a detailed report of what we discussed because it's like, it's, this full board is also getting the same report and, and being able to look at it. But, but, you know, so perhaps some board training would be great in that area for cross...
And just, and, and finally, throughout the years, I've asked Mr. Murray questions. He's always responsive. So when you're looking through those reports, something, you don't understand something or you want to better understand something, normally if you ask, you're going to get an answer within a day.
I mean, and I think that that's kind of one of the things too that we as board members have to take responsibility for and say that it's up to us as individuals to get the information that we need. So if, if you are being asked to vote on something and it's on the agenda, and, you know, it expects you to cast an informed vote. So instead of just saying, well, you know, no one ever told me that or no one gave me that information, you know, if the committee met about it, it's, you're not clear about it, maybe everyone else understands it, but you don't. Like, so it's up to you then to, to take the steps you need to get the information. Call the committee chair. And then if you don't get it, then, you know, tell the superintendent or, you know, whatever your, whatever your process is. But recognize that each one of us has the responsibility to cast an informed vote and to take the steps to get the information. Okay, then the next section was board operations. Where here you talked about the work of the board. And it really was kind of focusing on committees and, you know, how effectively you're using your committee structure. You know, someone had mentioned that you, you know, use them well. You, you know, reevaluate and look at them. Talked about the addition of the governance committee. About, you know, the fact that you have effective meetings. And then importantly, that there's a climate that everyone feels comfortable being able to, to speak and share. But then on the flip side said, but somehow there seems to be minimal discussion at the board table or a desire to have more discussion. And then also kind of felt like there's not a consistency after a committee meets to have some kind of consistent process for the rest of the board to get the information that it needs as part of the board's work. So I guess they'll like, that's an area where we probably need to dig a little deeper and have more of a conversation to come to an understanding on what that should look like so that everybody feels that we're doing this consistently and in a way that gives everyone at least access to information. Because ideally committees are talking about the things that are going to end up on the agenda. So when it comes on the agenda, it shouldn't be the first time you're seeing or knowing or hearing about it. It should be that perhaps because it came from a committee report and then you have the chance to ask, ask questions about it so that when it's on the agenda, you can say, oh, yeah, I, you know, I, I know about that. So just wanted to kind of throw out there what's, what you do now, what's working, what's not working, and what you see as a way to make your work more effective.
So I think because all of us here work and are very busy, where we fall short is sometimes taking the time to get those robust meeting notes out. One idea that I, I believe we talked about in one of our committees a while back, but I still might think make things more efficient, is at least if the scrive or the chairperson of the committee has a copy of the committee meeting agenda that can be edited, then that person can type right there during the meeting. So there's no work afterwards. At the conclusion of it, email it to the superintendent and probably the committee chair or the board president to make sure that there's nothing that's on there that shouldn't be, right? You don't want to accidentally put something, a personnel issue or something confidential or whatever. And then, and then from there, just write on to our shared drive. So that it sort of removes the homework aspect of it, hopefully.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that something else that'd be helpful is like when, when we send it, then very, we send out a note saying this, this has been updated, you know, checkered out. You know, because a lot of times I think that committee notes end up in the shared folder and you have to go looking for it to see if that, you don't, if you don't know that the committee met, then you wouldn't even know to look for it, you know? So I feel like we're doing a better job at taking minutes and, and using the shared folders.
I think, and Chris, you do a good job of why I always see this stuff. I do a terrible, we, myself have played a terrible job of getting the notes out in the minutes. But we have to be better at it. But I think the, the mechanics are there. But I feel like that shared drive is just like, you can clean it up. It's very hard to navigate. And then having a calendar that ties to the meetings and then we can see the minutes right in the meetings would be so much easier. It's just a simple mechanics thing, but I think if we cleaned it up, it would be easier. It's not as hard to find where stuff is.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with you on that.
I got the shared drive.
It's just, it's just everything's out there.
I think the only thing that is organized are the committee notes. That's the only one I have in common, then.
Yeah.
Because I think it's kind of like a standalone. Everything else is just kind of there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But in general, I think if we cleaned everything up and made the committee notes easier. And how do you, like, what I mean by calendars, we know when they're meeting. So we can look for the minutes a little sooner. But, yeah, I think we can do a better job than that, you know?
Board governance.
Yes.
We're trying to do a lot of jobs for board governance, right?
And on occasion, I think I, I try, you know, something where I can do, do better is, you know, when we know what all the meetings are. Like, like somewhere after a board meeting, I'll say, oh, okay, let's, let's... Sometimes it's on, on a piece of paper from the last committee. And, and it's like, I know it's coming up and, you know, you can't find it. And, and so one thing that's helpful I know for me is if I'm, I'm in doubt, I, I look, look at emails. I, I search my emails, like, when, when is it? And so I, on occasion, I've tried to send out an email to the whole board. Okay, here's the, you know, for this month between board meetings. This one already met, you know, and there's the date. This one, these are the upcoming ones. You know, I just list all the dates of all the committees that I'm aware of at that point.
Are there any committees that don't beat monthly?
Yeah.
I like the idea though of a, an agenda that you can just take notes on and, you know, have it done while you're in the meeting. Rather than, and maybe just have a, bring your laptop from home or have a laptop in there or whatever, just so we can take the notes and get them out.
Yeah.
Because once you leave and...
Writing it down doesn't work.
It's other distractions, so...
I, I, I like Chris' note, same issue.
I just think, listen, it's a, to Jonathan's point, it's a great idea. You have the governance committee, you can discuss this in governance. And I also think what I've always found to be, to be most efficient and can kick ideas out in committee even like, but I type everything on a Google Doc. And I type it right on the Google Doc as I'm there. And then I can share that with anyone, plug their emails in, plug in individual board members, plug in the entire board. Here's a shared doc, you're not the editor of it, you're simply a viewer of the doc. And that's it.
And you're going to contribute to that meeting to date on the calendar?
I would say it's probably a good idea to check it with the superintendent first because anything could be overrun and we just don't want to be putting stuff on there accidentally. That's true.
Yep.
The only thing I want to add to this, Lilia, for some reason you own some of the committee folders. So I just created them, so maybe, I tried to, at some point it got to a point where I couldn't add people. So we're coming up on our viewer meeting next month and we're going to need to take out people, add people. So if you could just take a look at that and at least make sure that the current chairs, if not everybody, can add and, and sort of people. If not, it just goes...
Yeah, sure, it should be.
We will have to change.
Sounds like our governance committee can also work on these technical, yeah. These technical issues with using the Google Drive.
And then somebody else had asked for clarification of the process of how you as a board agree that you'd like to respond when you receive emails from a member of the community? And what is the process for that so that you all understand that process? So I just wanted to put that out there and see what you do now and come to an understanding, come to an understanding of how the board wants to handle that.
I think it's typically, it falls on the board president to respond to emails. It's a very simple response. Quickly, if it requires input from people, then it, it's a slower process in responding. So it can be complicated. If it's an opinion, then I, then, you know, then I can't, you know, I can't express an opinion on behalf of the board. You know, it, it, so it can get complicated and that would probably be something we can work with our governance committee as well. Of like, just letting you know a process. So if, if it's understood, if, if the board gets an email, if I respond, it's, if it's, if it's acceptable practice, I can just, you know, forward the response to the board, you know, FYI, after I send the response. If it's acceptable, I don't know. But if you discuss the mechanics of that, that way, you know, if you all get an email and you all see the response, but you can't respond or comment on it, you know, that's way too old for me.
It just depends on the comment or question, right? Some, or I'll say accidentally directed to the board and I think they're appropriately sent to the administration.
If you're just referring to, you know, someone within the administration, the school staff, yes. The chain of command. But, yeah, but if it's a board-level question and you're all like, what, what, what? The board just respond to this board-level question? That's something that we, we should work on a process, you know, that is understood that it, you know, and then follow that.
Would that be something you thought, like, put in policy, like in our board?
Not, not necessarily, probably not necessarily because that could be...
No, it's more like a protocol. At some point we will have separate from policies, just kind of protocol. This is how we do things. Like it's not, yeah, it's not a set, you know, put it. And I can send you, if I've not sent you a copy of, I can send you a words manual that had some of those things in there. That would be helpful.
Very helpful, yes. Thank you.
Um, I can see the time is whizzing by here, right? So I think for performance, I think that this was an area of strength. You know, I thought it was great that the board, you know, used adjectives, like we operate with integrity, civility, respect, trust. You know, so I thought those things were all really important. Talked about, you know, that are binding by the code of ethics. You know, somebody had mentioned that just sometimes there chatter out there and so sometimes questioning how did this stuff get in there? But again, it seemed to be like an area that there was a lot of, you know, comments on from the board in terms of the board superintendent relationship. You know, the board, you know, again, you know, said how well we have served the town and the man, the importance of that, kind of the respect with those roles. It gets, has a good evaluation process. So it was just, the board, again, kind of going back to that, those same, you know, us asking for updates and us, you know, holding ourselves accountable to having a clearer understanding of the, of the updates. And then, and one of the things somebody had said that I thought was kind of interesting is said that we could do a better job of supporting the administration during controversial, controversial issues. So I wasn't sure that was just kind of a thought or just something that as a board you see yourself as an area for the governance committee to work on. But one of the areas that there, that there were a lot of comments on, if we looked at board and staff relationships, is saying that you can, we feel like from the board's perspective, that we acknowledge the, you know, accolades and the good work our staff does, but kind of said you really could do more about, like, actually doing recognitions here at the board table, right? At the board meetings. So just wanted to kind of see what you, like, what you were thinking about that.
I like our, I mean, the commendations part. We could do monthly to acknowledge staff or, you know, whoever it is that have done things. So I think the commendations addition that we've done is, is a nice asset.
I've, I've always felt that we try to be really careful about not mentioning staff member names during meetings and not overstepping our roles and responsibilities. But in that effort to be careful, I think sometimes we miss opportunities to really celebrate success here and there as, as staff members have them. Again, whether it's retirement or just, I mean, the, the teachers and the staff are the keystone of the whole thing here, right? And yes, we have the commendations and those are public record. I personally don't feel like I've done a good job of publicly thanking some of the amazing teachers I've gotten to know over the years. And again, I never know where to draw the line, but I think if we're doing things in a positive celebratory way, it's all right to talk about the staff is doing well, you know, as long as the administration knows ahead of time.
I think if we have a resignation or something on the agenda, I feel like we kind of go around and hear there at our comments.
Yeah.
You know, whoever, but it, it's, you know, it's a little loose, but it's nevertheless sincere, I think, when we have them.
And you bring up a good point, where it's probably ingrained in us not to talk about personnel, period. You know, so like good, bad, or indifferent, like you, you know, I guess, I, I, I kind of see what you mean. You know, it goes, you know, you just, it's just built in in that regard. So, yeah, there are ways to go in the positive senses, I guess. Like, like you say, when people retire, we do, you know, formally wish people well and say good things, which hopefully is okay.
And then the, the last piece of this was looking at, you know, the board and the community. And so, you know, for every board, this is an ongoing point of discussion, right? Of how do we, how do we engage them? How do we, how do we hear their voice? How do we find out, you know, what our community's expectations are? And I think the board acknowledged that you've made some strides in that area, but still are holding yourselves, saying, okay, again, asking those questions, like what more can we do, right? And so I think that this... And so I think that this is just an ongoing conversation. You know, somebody, a couple of people had mentioned, I know one of the things that asked for is a community relations program. And I know, again, this is part, again, we're going back to the strategic plan, right? And these things came up in the strategic plan in terms of talking about, you know, community and engaging them. So again, recognizing that this is part of a bigger picture, of a bigger plan that we're working toward, right? So I don't know if there's anything specific that the board had in mind or just kind of that general sense of, we acknowledge that this is something we need to keep striving for.
I found that when it came to that section, the board and board and community, there was a lot of things that I felt that you have to say, not observed, because I feel that we're, you know, like, provides not to mean parental involvement. I mean, other than our designated time, I mean, there, we're not supposed to be necessarily, like, I don't know, like, how do you, the board doesn't have direct, like...
Relationship.
Relationship for town halls without, you know, we want the channel, communication channel to be through the administration, right? So I'm a little confused on if there's something that we're missing there, can we, is there...
So it's more about the first three words you said, provides the opportunity, right? As opposed to actually doing it, does the opportunity exist and, you know, is it identified? Like, you said it was identified in the strategic plan. So are we acknowledging in our district that this is something that's of value?
Right, not that we're doing it ourselves. Okay. Because, right, there's coffee talks and there's other opportunities for parents involved, there's like programs and, you know, cybersecurity and CPAG. There are a lot of opportunities, but I felt that I wasn't sure how to interpret those questions, which might lead to lower numbers than that.
And my thought was, I mean, you know, for interaction, you know, I was getting the questions of the committee interacting with the board. So first of all, you can only interact with the board where we're sitting here, not really anywhere else where we can speak on behalf of the board. But is there opportunities? And it's sort of a sterile environment if you want to, you know, come in, interact with the board. It's like Paul, you know, Paul Carey, you know, at a very formal meeting. Are there other opportunities the board can provide officially where, you know, meet and greet, you know, come meet, you know, up to four of us at one time? And just, you know, we can tell you what we do, role responsibilities, I don't know. So...
I mean, because if we think about the fact that, you know, typically the reason that you would be doing something like that would be, you know, that people are going to come and share their concerns, there would be an expectation that you're going to do something about it. And you can't do something about it. You can't, you know, after respond to things until after failure of an administrative solution at a public meeting. So you're putting yourselves into a space that you are not supposed to be in. So...
I was just thinking that, I mean, one thing we could do is, I mean, we're not, we have the board event meeting on the calendar, but we could send emails, meeting coming up, agenda is posted, I mean, that's more work on the administration side, of course, but that would be one way that we could reach out to the community to let them know your opportunity is coming.
So it's more about giving the opportunity to the community rather than us putting ourselves out in certain situations.
Inviting them in, yes. Right, so I guess that's what I'm thinking, let them to come.
Agreed.
Other than, you know, like, you making yourself visible at community events, because I think I, you know, someone else said that the board could be doing a better job promoting the positive image of the district. So, you know, so that could be a way that you could hold yourselves to, you know, a way you could make a difference is by attending community events. So you're not there, you know, representing the board, but just as kind of, you know, that positive face, right? And people saying, boy, like, this board really cares, look at this board is really involved in things. And then just, you know, the last couple of things, you asked about major challenges facing the district, so you can see some of the things that, you know, mentioned there and any additional areas for focus and training. So I just kind of wanted to, I see we're almost right at the end here, if there's any, you know, potential wrap-up things that as a group that you thought about this or any kind of parting, other than let's, we work to the governance committee, right? If there's any other parting thoughts about this and, you know, so hope that, you know, like you said, it was an exercise that allowed us to identify some highlighted areas and have some good conversations about the work of the boards.
Thank you very much, yes. I think, you know, read through everything and, you know, bring it all with you at upcoming meetings to, you know, your ideas on what we can do to, you know...
And we, to be more practical, I think there's three main core action items that I had in my mind, right? One is calendarizing somehow, so I don't think this goes over the governance committee, but calendarizing how we evaluate our goals and actions and that's what, of course, I threw up a few here. That was that one, right?
I'll share a sample calendar with you.
And I don't know where that goes, that's one, actually, I don't know if they're accountable or responsible person. But the other one was exploring the core assessment kind of stuff, if that's a program curriculum thing. Third is, there's a laundry list for governance. There is, bucket that as there's a governance committee and it has like five big ways. I think those were the, oh, and then, well, this is part of governance, with the articulation of like, what's happening in the committee.
Committee notes.
Committee notes, but that may be bucketed under the governance thing, but that's, those are the ones I had off the top of my head.
So that, you know, so that would be, the committee notes would be, the committee chairs have to, you know, timely get their notes out there on the drive. And I, what would be good is to have a, at very least have a calendar, you know, accessible to all of the committees meet. And that way, if you see that the committee met recently, expect the notes to come soon.
There is one more that does, so they have the calendar and then on the date of the calendar, it has what committee's meeting on that date. And when the agenda's available, they add the agenda onto that date. And then when the minutes are available, they add the minutes onto that date. So that everything is right there.
It would be nice to say, and that would be great.
Like a link of the calendar.
That would keep everything organized, very nicely.
And Jeff, there's like seven others for the governance committee. Somebody who's currently on the governance committee, I got him down.
That's foreopening, man. And before the governance committee leaves this evening, please let us schedule a date very soon.
Plan B, I was, you know, we also, depending on how long this conversation took, I was going to talk about parliamentary procedure, so I will come back. You can have me back at another time then to do that.
As soon as we set a calendar, we need to reach out to you quickly.
Okay, yeah. So I just wanted to thank everyone for this time, for having this good conversation, and I appreciate the follow-ups and kind of pulled it all together here.
Very much.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Okay. At this time, the next item on the agenda is the biannual report on the RBS submission to the state's student safety data systems. Dr. Lys.
All right, good evening, everyone. So in compliance with the New Jersey Department of Education, the guidance, the school districts must report out twice a year incidents of violence, vandalism, substance abuse, weapons offenses, and give which is harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Sorry, please, this is... For the first reporting period of the 2324 school year, there were no incidents reported under the category of violence, none under the category of vandalism. We had no incidents of substance abuse, no incidents during the first reporting period for any weapon offenses. By law, we must report to the state if there are any students with IEPs that were suspended, and for this reporting period, we did not. And we also report on HIB cases. For the first reporting period of this school year, we do not have any HIB investigations. And this concludes the biannual report on the student safety data system submission, which will happen a little bit later on in the month.
What was the reporting period?
SSTS, Student Safety Data System.
No, I mean, what period?
Oh, it's the beginning of the school year until December 31st.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I see our student representative is not available this evening, and that makes up to the board business missions, one and two. Any motion, please?
I'll move, I'll second.
Thank you, thank you. And if there are any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of board business motions, one and two, while as the paper say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Any abstentions? That brings us to administrative reports, starting with the business administrator board secretary report, Mr. Murray.
Okay, thank you very much, good evening. Only a couple of items. Dr. Angelo and I had the opportunity to do our mid-year budget review, superintendent and the county business administrator, as well as the superintendents and business administrator from four other Morris County districts. It was a great opportunity to share ideas and concerns facing our district at the present time and well into the future. The next on the list is referendum planning. The facility committee met on November 20th, and the finance committee met on December 6th to review information and the next steps for the March referendum. The preliminary eligibility cost letter, the BEC letter that we were waiting for, did come in on December 7th. The district is expected to receive approximately $4.7 million in debt service aid, which equates about 34% of the overall eligible cost. And it actually is about $300,000 more than we expected. They did include some things in there that typically they may not have. It's a new set of eyes down there, so they looked at some projects and they gave us money. So that's actually a good thing. And the discussions took place regarding the application submission process and changes that were made with the Department of Ed and launching a referendum public relations campaign beginning in January to provide information for the upcoming March vote. The next finance committee meeting is scheduled for 12:15, which is Friday, and a facility meetings planned for next week. Just trying to finalize the timing. The 2022-23 audit was submitted to the DOE as, it was uploaded to the website as required. So we met that deadline. A lot of districts continue to struggle with meeting that deadline. And as far as the 2425 budget preparation, the NJ DOE has not released the calendar, the election calendar, which they normally do by now, that sets our dates for submissions with the county superintendent approvals and so forth. So we're waiting for that. Budget development continues, discussions on enrollment and staffing, and with the administrative team and the finance committee discussed it. And budget request documents are due from teachers and staff next week in advance of the winter break. And additional budget meetings with the finance committee will continue in January, followed by presentations to the full board. And all building systems appear to be working well. So nothing to really report on other ones. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to the superintendent's report, Dr. Angelo.
Okay, good evening, everyone. A few things for your information. We will be hosting a STEAM Challenge Night for fifth and sixth grade students in February that will be facilitated by our teachers here to provide an opportunity to engage students and parents in meaningful and relevant ways, so we're looking forward to that. More information to follow. We have a cultural arts assembly next week that will focus on dance. Very grateful to be working with Mrs. Cooper from our Home and School Association, who is also helping us to explore opportunities alongside our students to schedule other events on the calendar that supplement our fine arts programming here at the school in the new year. At this time of year, the generosity of those in our school and our community at large is very evident with our giving tree. So very grateful to everyone who chose to help and give and help those in need in our community and beyond. Enjoy a very wonderful holiday. And finally, thanks to Jonathan LeVar for his service to our district, for your insightfulness, your support. You've been a wonderful resource for our school district and our community. I'm very grateful to you and appreciated the opportunity to work with you. So thanks very much, Jonathan.
Thank you, Dr., appreciate it.
That concludes Murph's report.
Thank you. Let's see, we all had a chance to look at the nurses' report and the attendants' report, and that brings us to commendations.
Commendations for the evening. Thank you to the Khrushnerov family for their donation of their daughter's first flute to the Rockaway Valley School, which will become a part of our loaning instrument family. A huge thanks to the following members of the community for their contributions to our family support program during Thanksgiving. Pastor Dawn Maffetone and the congregation at the Rockaway Valley United Methodist Church for the boxes and gift cards for our families. Our RBS staff for their monetary donations for gift cards for Thanksgiving. To Boy Scout Troop 69 and Mr. Keith Donnelly for two turkeys and a box of groceries. To the Home and School Association for gift cards for groceries as well. A round of applause for our student musicians who performed their first round of concerts last week. The upper band, the upper grade band and select chorus sounded fantastic Tuesday night, and the fourth and fifth grand, fifth grade band and vocal music students performed splendidly on Friday morning, both under the direction of Mrs. Kolar and Mrs. Porta. A thank you to Mrs. Fusco for the lovely decorations in our concert spaces and for helping the K2 students craft decorations for the municipal building's holiday tree. Thanks also to Ms. Cool and Mrs. Salzberg for their annual decorating at Town Hall. Another round of applause goes out to the Education Foundation for their musical review production featuring students from several grades last week. The talent at RBS certainly knows no bounds. Spotlight on student work for November in preschool to Camilla Karshner and Rayanne Mom and Kimber, Colin Cortezzi, Lizzie Del Vecchio, Graham Dowling, Wesley Ismail, Charlie Daglio, and Oliver Wills. In first grade, Giovanni Chivari and Kaylee Starr. In second grade, Ethan Valgobin, Victoria Gibson, Kendall Luciano, and Emma Talarchik. In third grade, Catherine Ketcherbe, Finley Lee, Miles Lawrence, and Caleb Schleider. To our Falcons of the Month for November, congratulations to the following students. In fifth grade, to Carter Long. In sixth grade, to Jacob Brown. In seventh grade, to Lucia Cena. And in eighth grade, to Olivia Havens. And those are our commendations for the evening.
Great, thank you. And that brings us through correspondence 1 through 3, which you also have a chance to review. That brings us to open session number one. The first public comment period will be limited to agenda items only. The second public commentary will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are unable to enable the public to give comments to the board. Personal matters and day-to-day operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chain of command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record, and all comments are limited to five minutes. Would anyone from the public wish to address the board on agenda items only?
Mark Pascarella, 12 Dawgwood Lane. Would you consider communications at this point an agenda item, since you were talking about communications a little earlier?
We were going to discuss it in our governance committee and find and identify ways that we can...
Well, I'm going to just bring something to your attention, just very simply. You only have one board meeting a month. It has been announced, the last meeting and this meeting in the township times, it was at 7:30. Your bulletin board out front has November 13th, 6:30 right now. There's no December meeting even on that bulletin board. So, I sound a little irritated because I like to come and I was upset a little bit last, unfortunately, Miss Landis heard mine. So, no, actually, it was, oh, yes, it was you and Catherine. And once again, I actually came into the other driveway just to see what's out there, and I saw November 13th. I says, okay, I think they probably meant December 13th, and I noticed it was 6:30, but the township letter had 7:30. So I think the first step might be good to make sure you get these dates out a little bit more actively.
Did you reach out to the township as well?
Did I reach out? Well, here's, you mean, as far as what they do?
No, no, to see about how they were informed by us for the meeting.
That I don't, you know, I haven't had a chance, because I had my issues over there also with them. But I know going back, like, when I tried to get them, this is historical, when I was on the board trying to get them to post the meetings, they were very resistant to it. You know, it's like almost they need to be spoon-fed, okay? And then, so there's this clashing back and forth of the two organizations. I'm not sure who's right, who's wrong, but I do, so I don't know. And I know it's Doug Cabana who basically does the scheduling over there. So I don't know what, how the miscommunication, and I just realized it, like, just now when I came into this meeting and I looked it up to see, because I thought I saw it in the Times for 7:30 when I looked on Sunday, or the newsletter that goes out. So I don't know what the answer is that and how to fix that, but it needs to be fixed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the comments. And is there anyone else in the public that wishes to address the board on agenda items only at this time? Okay, if not, we'll move along to the easel reports, starting with the Mountain Lakes Board of Education.
Okay. So they've had two meetings since we last met, one on November 20th and one this past Monday, December 11th. There were a lot of messages of gratitude this time of year from, both from the MLDA and to the board and the board and staff. Mr. Featherman had mentioned that he's feeling pretty nostalgic as he closes in on retirement, sending messages of gratitude and empathy towards the community, staff, and students. The superintendent search is still in progress. On November 20th, Mr. David Santos, Mr. Santos is the director of IT, gave a full report on the development of the IT department. So he's recently, he's driven, some of his goals are set by the... So he recently, he's driven, some of his goals are set by the strategic plan. So he formed a district-wide technology committee, has 12 members on it. They developed a three-year technology plan. One of the goals, which I thought was pretty interesting for the high school, I'm not sure how it will work, but they're looking at going that one-to-one device. And I don't know how that goal would necessarily impact, like bring your own, because a lot of students bring their own device and if they're going to be purchasing devices for students. So that's something to keep an eye out for. They're working on replacing their network, their district telephones, they're working on disaster recovery and also a business continuity plan that if business gets interrupted, how does this school they keep going, pandemic-like type of. They finished the website. It's pretty fantastic. They're working on their social media and they're monitoring community engagement a little bit better for their social media, making sure that people are happy, the information's accurate, and they're reaching out to parents. IT team is working to move to a great fix strategy, like business map ever to a more proactive one, making sure that everything's working versus problems. Yeah, they have quite a few more goals that are a little more detailed than I can send this to. In the December 11th meeting, there are two presentations, one from Mr. Henry and one from Mr. Wallace. Mr. Henry talked about arts recognition for this first half of the year for the fall. And he spoke about there's honors, there's, there's just a lot of bands, but there's certain students that are like very excelling. There's four students are in the junior area band, six students are in honors choir, two students are attending the Juilliard Music Advanced Program, Saturday Program. Three students are in the area band. He wanted to congratulate the cast of Clue, the cast and crew of Clue. There are about 45 students involved. If anybody saw it, it was a magnificent production. They had every room represented on wheels spinning constantly, like the characters moving from the kitchen to the billiard room to the library. It was amazing. And so I have a little bias there because there's a stage manager. But yeah, they did a fantastic job. The visual arts has, the 3D art class in visual arts has a big display or an event coming up, so staging for that. And this is a week there for their winter concerts and there's quite a few of them going on. They have one called Symphonic Stories honoring Mary Boyan. Then there was a very awesome long presentation by Mr. Wallace, the athletic director, about like the amazing programs that happened in the fall in sports. So just a few highlights for the high school. The boys soccer were sectional champs. It was the first time since 1985. And two of their team, two of the team members made all-state soccer teams. So there's 15 all-state players. One of them was Mary Sponally from Booton Township. So that was just really huge. They're all in Cloud Nine. The herd is, I'm sure most of you know, they won the state championship and kudos to Booton Township there too. Their four captains were all Booton Township students. So it's been a wild ride seeing these kids grow up and see their successes. So that was very exciting. They went into the sectional fourth, I mean, they went into the tournament fourth seed and then they went against Shavaz. There were 1,500 fans there. And it was interesting hearing the play-by-play because it was like Shavaz is like, they have a choice program for their sport, so if they don't, if they're not offered football at their school. So basically like all the good football players go to Shavaz. And that all, the same thing happened at the next game, they were playing Glassboro and that's a choice school. So they brought in a lot of players too. So this, it's just pretty fascinating to see our two small towns like go up against some really incredible teams and do well. So the girls soccer started as ninth seed and they just won their second group championship back-to-back two years in a row, which is fantastic. They lost last year 17 seniors, so they thought it was going to be a golden year and here they are doing it again. They had seven seniors. One of them, Audrey Conlin, was recognized for a contribution to the team. And Coach Buckley for the field hockey just retired. They celebrated her achievements. She's been there 30 years. Her record was 153, 418, 16 ties. And there's just a lot of great camaraderie among the coaches about how well they communicate with the arts program with, and among the coaches with the fields and supporting each other and how the students from each team goes to each other's events and they support each other. So it was a great wrap-up for the fall program. Just some updates at the high school. From the facilities point of view, each committee there had wrapped up what they've accomplished, like each committee chair wrapped up what they've accomplished for the year, like for the calendar year. So there's some highlights that the facilities had taken care of some asbestos at the high school. They completed the patio. They got a rod grant for a new HVAC system coming. They have a referendum project for the kitchen in the works. They made track repairs, added a new bike pool and new techs, which are like highlights for the high school. Regarding personnel, they're having some challenges getting paraprofessionals. And so they spend a lot of time discussing how to better attract the professionals they could currently offer benefits to paraprofessionals at this point. So they're wondering if that might be part of it and if they're going to be raising the rate there. Some of the challenges. And they are finding that they think that it's because Governor Murphy has signed a more flexible law to, or, it's not a law, statute, I guess, to allow teachers more flexibility and how they use their sick days. And so they're finding that they're taking a longer sick days and so they're struggling a little bit there. Let me see. And long range plan finance. In special services, they highlighted that there is a new evaluation criteria for special services eligibility, which is going to be talking about strength and weaknesses. And they're continuing their Orton-Gillingham training. And just that they've, this year they've negotiated both the ML-EEA five-year contract and the MLAA five-year contract. And so they feel that's a lot of win-win happening on their negotiations team and that our, you know, send-receive is ongoing. So, but they've done the math, so they're not worried there. And curriculum, we talked about testing and sequencing. Correct. Not my school district.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to New Jersey School Boards Association.
That concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. And Morris County School Boards Association.
Yes. Couple things. There was a meeting last week on December 7th. In addition to myself, Barry and Christine joined and it was at, it was in Morris Falls, it was very convenient. A couple of things to note regarding just some different presentations throughout the evening. One is that there are three new field service reps that are recently hired in State of Jersey, so this is very unusual. So I wasn't really sure as to if these were filling existing openings or maybe they're doing a realignment of who and what districts and their reps are being, are supported by. So just a heads up, hopefully we will not see any change. They also mentioned that there is a podcast that's going to be a monthly podcast called the Boardroom Podcast. It'll have live Q and A and some chat features of individuals going to call in and speak to board members about different topics, assuming that will roll out in January, so stay tuned for that. They also had, the feature was defining boardmanship and controversy. And they did a presentation and they also just shared out the slide deck with us a couple of days ago, so I'll make sure that gets into the folder. And they basically brought up an area of controversy based in a real-life scenario of a turf field being put in. They gave a lot of different information and the task was break out into small groups and kind of peel away the layers of the onion to kind of understand what's the real issue, where the concern should be, where does the group need more information. I thought that was a really good exercise and we've gone around and discussed. So that was really good. They also acknowledged retiring board members, Jonathan, and some new board members as well. So those materials will be in the folder in the next day or so. And then the next two meetings, the next one in February is all virtual, so if you're thinking about attending one of these, couldn't find the time, here's your chance to do it in your slippers. So that's in February, February 8th, and then we have March 21st and May 2nd. I'll talk more about them next month.
Great. Thank you.
I always put in my plug for New Jersey School Boards and Morris County School Boards. If you can make it, they're, they'll get their emails. They offer lots of training, both at the state level, regional trainings and local county association trainings. Highly recommend going if you can. There's even a series of online seminars that you can do at your, also at your leisure. And, yep, all very worthwhile. And so I always want to put in a plug and highly recommend that. Educational Services Commission of Morris County, their meeting began at 6:30 tonight concurrent with our meeting, so I did not attend that. Booton Township Special Education Parent Advisory Group.
All right. Good evening. On November 28th, since we last met, the Booton Township parent reps for the CPAG attended the Mountain Lakes CPAG Steering Committee. The discussion centered on the special ed program at Mountain Lakes School District and future presentation ideas that they could come up with next year. On November 29th, there was an overview of the multi-sensory reading techniques. It was presented by Mrs. Ambrose and Mrs. Oliverburg. Parents learn teaching methods that engage more than one sense at a time in addition to iPad apps that you could use to help struggle with readers. Through December and January, the Booton Township CPAG parent leaders are going to meet and develop the annual special ed parent survey that goes out to all the special education parents within the district. The next presentation for CPAG is January 16th and it's going to be, I don't, the location I think is TBD, but the subject will be behavior management intervention strategies. I thought I saw that it might be at the United Methodist Church, but I'm not 100% sure they did see TBD, so I'll let everybody else know if I hear.
And concludes my report? Great. Thank you. And that brings us to the Booton Township Education Foundation.
Nothing substantial to report except a good, a big shout-out to the foundation for the musical review last week for putting on a really great program and continuing to provide a lot of opportunities for the students in the whole neighborhood. Quick thank you to the foundation.
Great. Concluding my report? Thank you. And the Rockaway Valley Home and School Association.
They did not have a meeting this morning.
Thank you. And Township of Booton Township.
Okay. A few things to report. The holiday recycling schedule, it's on www.boutontownship.com and it is, the depot will be open this Saturday the 16th as well as the 30th from 9 to noon. And then curbside will be Thursday, December 21st and Thursday, January 4th. The Booton Township Fire Department will escort Santa and his helpers on a fire truck on Sunday, December 17th. The event will begin at noon, but there's no specific times throughout the afternoon for him to be in each neighborhood. Listen for the sirens and when you see the flashing lights, come out to see Santa. Continuing the longstanding tradition at Town Hall, the Township Christmas tree was again decorated by the RVS kindergarten person, second grade, thanks to Mrs. Salzberg and Mrs. Cool for keeping this tradition going. The Township is seeking interested individuals to join the recycling team as recycling depot attendants. On Saturday mornings from 9 to noon, individuals must be 16 years or older to apply $15 per day is what the pay is. Contact the recycling coordinator, Daria Vandergoat, at dvandergoat@bootontownship.com for more information. And that is all.
Great. Thank you. And that brings us to the Booton Township Green Team.
No, we did not have a meeting for this night, so no worries.
Great. Thank you. And that brings us to Facilities and Transportation, those are committees.
So we had a meeting on November 20th. Mr. Murray gave an overview of that in his report. The agenda and some other information is in our shared folder. We're trying to get together another meeting on Monday, only if you're back with the show. Murray?
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Your calendars?
Yeah. But right now, no further information to report on other than what Johnson.
Great. Thank you. And that brings us to Finance and Finance Committee. The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, December 6th. We did some housekeeping discussion on some report formats that are generated for the board. We look at the 2024 budget cycle coming up and had an overview of that. We did some more overview of the referendum project and additional, you know, additional discussion on the referendum and we're going to continue that discussion upfront. And that brings us to Finance motions 1 through 6. Any motion please? Is there a second? Are there any questions, comments or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Finance motions 1 through 6, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Any abstentions? And that brings us to Personnel.
So Personnel, we had a meeting.
Last Monday. Yeah, last Monday. It wasn't 40.
We discussed Personnel 2 and Personnel 3. We also discussed the draft of the Personnel Committee, can you read the description? We talked about that. We had some early discussions on a couple of other topics, including substitute teacher pay. And that was one of the, those meeting notes are also in Personnel in that folder along with the description which is attached, if anybody wants to read it or model their description if they're looking on one. Just keeping consistent.
And thank you. And that brings us to Personnel motions 1 through 5. Any motion please?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Personnel motions 1 through 5, this is a roll call. Mr. Brander?
Yes.
Mrs. Cabana?
Yes.
Mr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. LeVar?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
And Mrs. Noeber?
Yes.
Motion ahead. Great. Thank you. And that brings us to Program. The Program Curriculum Committee met on December 7th, I hope I got that right. We discussed a tentative district calendar, it's still on construction. Our districts are super intensive and in discussion with our Mountain Lakes Superintendent. They're still working, working on these draft calendars. But we discussed an upcoming HUSAC visit in January. As you will know, our district is under HUSAC review process for the school year and different things are happening in that process and we'll gather a brief overview of that. We discussed the STEAM challenge night that Dr. Angelo mentioned in his superintendent's report. And also we discussed reinforcement periods for grade seven and eight. We're looking at what happens, what happens during reinforcement and ways we can strengthen it. And with that, we have Program motion number one. Any motion please?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Program motion 1, those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Any abstentions? And that brings us to Policy.
Okay. The policies for first read, the notes did not make their way into the, into the calendar.
After you.
I don't know how, but very straightforward. We did these policies sort of virtually. We didn't meet because the first two policies, orientation and withhold implement, they were just way past due for updating. So we, that's why they're on submission for the first read. And then... And then this horse-related concussion and head injury, if anyone reflects, we literally just approved this policy at the last meeting, and as soon as it was, as we approved it, new standards are, new, the school boards issued some changes to it. So they're, they're included now in that policy, which we did just approve. So that is that. And then the policies for approval, the approval of one of those, I'm trying to think of those.
Great. Thank you. And that brings us to Policy motion number one. Have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Is there a second? Any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the questions on the adoption of Policy motion number one, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. Any abstentions? And that brings us to open session number two. The second public comment period will be open to any topic. Please be mindful that public comment periods are available to enable the public to get found, or to feedback on the board. Personal matters and day-to-day operations are not appropriate subjects before meetings. These can always be most effectively resolved with the appropriate staff members or administrators according to the chain of command concept. Questions may be directed to the appropriate school personnel or board through email. Please state your name and address for the record, and all comments are limited to five minutes. Would anyone from the public wish to address the board on any matter? Yes?
Board of Pasquale of Twelve Dog with Lane. I know it's a month late, I had wanted to do this at the last meeting, but I still did not want to pass this by. I just wanted to commend the music teacher who ran the Veterans Day program. I thought it was outstanding. I mean, just the whole management, the time management, it, it was just an outstanding job, so I just wanted for, for the record that, you know, she should be, or he should be acknowledged for, it was, it was excellent. Thanks.
Well, thank you very, very much. Really appreciate that. Thank you for, for here. Yes, and next, anyone else from the public wish to address the board? Our band director's here, so I was looking behind you saying, thank, thank you.
That wasn't me.
Oh, nothing.
For Veterans Day.
Thank you, Mrs. Cole. Thank you, Mrs. Cole.
I know her. She knows me.
Obviously.
No, it wasn't her. But I know she doesn't have seen the Johnsons.
Congratulations again. Obviously, I was not at the presentation.
Thank you for the course and the winter conference.
Yes, I did, and thank you. And sorry, Mrs. Park, okay, so would anyone else from the public wish to address the board on any matter? Yes?
Hi, I'm Joanne Barkowski, I live at one fifty-eight Lake Drive. I'm, I'm very glad that I got to come here on your last meeting, Mr. Lavard, just to say thank you again to you, but I primarily came this evening because I wanted to publicly thank Mrs. Hermie for her role as our liaison, as a member of our Mountain Lakes Board of Education. She is a champion for Booton Township. She is a champion for your students. She never misses an opportunity to, to celebrate what's done here and find ways to build bridges between Booton Township and Mountain Lakes. I learn from her every time we have a conversation. I'm grateful for her service, I'm grateful that I get to work with you, and I, I really just wanted to come and tell all of you, you always send us someone wonderful, you did it again. This is, it's just been, it's been a great year, and sincerely thank you, Mrs. Hermie, for all that you do. I just really appreciate it, and I, I thank you for the opportunity to come and look at all of you, and, and thank you for the way we get to work together, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. And anyone else from the public wish to address the board on any matter? Okay. Nice. Oh, that must have been, there we are. That brings us to Business, any new business to come before the board? And is there any new business to come before the board?
I'm just saying, thank you all, it's been a pleasure working alongside all of you currently in the past and those of you who will all be here in the future. Wanted to thank the, this is an amazing town that we're in, it's a great school, the school really is the gem of our community, so I know that it's in good hands. The teachers here are amazing, the staff, school's always clean, the administration does a really good job. I could count so many things that have gone really well here, and I know we don't always agree on everything, but at the end of the day, when I look around and I look at how many students are coming out of here and doing well, I know that we're really doing a lot of good things here at Booton Township and at Rockaway Valley School, so it's been an honor, and I look forward to sustaining and continue, continued, you know, good blessings for the school and success of the school. So, thank you all, and, you know, good luck.
Jonathan, on behalf of the board, the administration, I have a little something for you, to not only acknowledge your, your years of service, but to thank you. And hopefully you'll have some time over the holidays to share it with your family, but again, thank you so much.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I too would like to thank you so much for, you know, serving on the board, you know, for these, I think it's four years, right? You know, you've been, as Dr. Angelo said, a valuable member of this board. I can't say enough good things about all of your contributions and things you've done over these four years, we miss you. And I just really want to thank you very much.
You're welcome. And if I recall, about five years ago, you said to me, Jonathan, you should join the board, we meet for fifteen minutes once a month. Now we're not.
And then the pandemic happened.
Yeah.
Changed it all, that's changed it all, yeah. Jinxed it. I really meant twenty minutes, I'm sorry.
You might even get to work from home.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness.
Yes, thank you, yes, we.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. And that brings us to, I see you have other, other new businesses I have, actually, kind of piggybacking Mrs. Park, this comes, we have committees and liaisons that we redo at the beginning of every year at the reorganization meeting. Whoever elects president will appoint members to the committees, and also the board decides who the liaisons are to our various organizations, including the Mountain Lakes Board of Education. So I think we only, you know, we have one new member coming on, but we'll, we'll let that person know what the committees and liaisons are as well, but, you know, since you all are, eight of you, eight of us are continuing, so please consider, you know, over the holidays, what liaisons and committees you might like to participate in the next school year. And we do have to appoint the Mountain Lakes Board of Education representative at our reorganization meeting in January. The Services Commission requires a member of the New Jersey School Boards, and, but, you know, so please think, think about that and ask any questions if there's something, you know, if you're like, if you're doing the same thing, you want to keep doing it, great. If you want to do something different, ask questions of the person doing it, or, you know, we'll let you know what they do. And with that, I think we have a motion to go into closed session. So I'd like to entertain the motion to enter into executive session to discuss issues that board confidentiality has permitted in the Open Public Mean Act, Chapter two, three, one, what we all see nineteen seventy-five. These matters may or may not be made public before the meeting, so the public's confidentiality is subject to the board to discuss negotiations about place agreements. There will be no board action when we return, except adjourn our meeting. And before we do a motion and second, thank you all for coming, it's been a great year. Have a happy holiday, happy new year, and we'll see you next year. And with that, may I have a motion, please? Move. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. At this time, there's no other board business to come before the board. May I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Thank you. Have a great holiday, everyone, and we'll see you in January.